I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the retreat of Joseph Taral.
Thank you. We could have a moment of silence, I believe Mr. Oldham has a few words.
I want us to remember in a moment of silence one of our workers that passed away this week, Ms. Hilton, who was a cafeteria worker at Riverdale High School. She was actually driving her daughter, who was having a baby, to the hospital and they had an accident and she was killed in that accident last Saturday. And the mother and baby's okay, but let's remember the Hilton family at this time, please.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Holliday, a Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Provo consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six, I believe we've got two visitors tonight. First one we're gonna have is Ms. Victoria Ohtimer, A-Timer. Is she here? All right. Then Joshua Rigsby. Mr. Rigsby, we've got three minutes.
I want to begin by thanking the board members that attended tonight, they're wearing purple in solidarity. I'm here to speak on the Glisten Safe Zone poster issue and I want to thank the board for allowing us continuing open dialogue about this issue. My name's Joshua Rigsby, I'm president of the MTSU Lambda Association and I'm here to speak about the Safe Zone Glisten poster. The Safe Zone poster was designed with one goal in mind, to let LGBTQ students know, as well as their allies know, that this poster was displayed in an area that is going to be safe for them and free of bullying and discrimination. I've been present at the other hearings where this issue has come up and I'm quite disgusted by some of the arguments that have been given in favor of leaving the poster down. At MTSU, we as students celebrate our differences and work together. October marked the 25th anniversary of MT Lambda and one of our founders spoke at the last board hearing and he's here tonight. For the past 25 years, we fought for LGBT students on campus, as well as in the surrounding community, and on many occasions partnered with Republican organizations as well as Christian organizations for various events. We even today have several Christian leaders on campus who are close personal friends of myself and attend our meetings. We work together to educate one another and celebrate those differences that make us who we are, instead of drawing battle lines and fighting each other. In fact, the MTSU True Blue pledge and motto is a monument to diversity and inclusion for all students. The LGBT students that are in your school systems deserve to go to school without being bullied and discriminated against by other students. And when these students get out into the real world, they're going to have to work with people they may not always agree with and vice versa. Simply put, just put the poster back up and let these students know that they're safe to go to school.
Thank you, Mr. Rigsby. Anybody has any comments in regards to this, we'll save them on general discussion. Number seven, Mr. Oldham.
Number seven is some recognitions. I'd like to kind of explain to our listeners a little bit, I'd like to read the statement before we go into that. The Mid-Cumlin District School Board members attended a Tennessee School Board Fall District meeting on Thursday, September 19th, 2013. The Rutherford County School Board was the only system attending the meeting that had a 100% participation. That was all around this area of middle Tennessee. I'm not sure what the district is, but it was a large number of boards there and I was with you, you had 100% attendance. TSBA awards were awarded for 2013. The awards are presented to individual board members who have achieved one of five levels of boardmanship standards over the past year. The program is designed to recognize school board members for participation in board activities beyond the local level through a commitment to training, a willingness to participate in workshops and the volunteer spirit. The boardmanship award honors not only the quantity, but also the quality of the participation. And in recognition tonight for 2013, the Tennessee School Board Association Boardship Awards were given to Level One, Hallenar Blankenship, Mr. David Nipper and Mr. Corey Young. Level Two, it was given on the September the 9th, with Mr. Aaron Holliday. Also, Level One Boardship Award was awarded to Tim Tack in 2012, so you received one a year ago. And the 2013 National School Board Association Distinguished Service Award actually came to our board chair, Terry Hodge. And in the 2008 and 2011 National School Board Association Distinguished Service Award was awarded to Mr. Wayne Blair. So all of our board members are very involved in Tennessee School Board Association and at the national level. So I want all of our listeners and people in the audience tonight to know of their accomplishments. In fact, let's give him a hand for that. That's number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Number eight.
Number eight, this is a real spotlight on education tonight. I want to take this time to welcome Principal Dirk Ash from Laverne High School and two students, Ryan Harvey and Haley Smith, they were from Laverne High School. They're here to provide us with an update on the dual enrollment academy at Laverne High School. You may remember the presentation last spring regards to the dual enrollment academy that Laverne was planning. They're here today to share with us the outstanding participation they've experienced in their first year. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Ash.
Thank you. I'm really gonna let the two students who are experiencing dual enrollment speak to you about their experience there, but I do want to thank you for your support and a lot of times ideas don't seem to come through. We have ideas and the follow-through isn't always there. And we got extreme support from the school board, from the central office, Mr. Zago and his staff. And we currently have around 100 students in dual enrollment and they'll earn around 1,500 hours at the end of this year from Motlow to get them a firm start on their college career. So it's been very successful for us. And after they speak, if y'all have any questions, we have the brain trust, all my administrators over here that can answer questions that you have. But it has gone very well and we could not have done it without the support of the school board and our families really appreciate it. Several of them are getting a start on their first semester completely done at a very reasonable cost. I think it's about $125 a student by the time all the grants are in and the scholarship money. So it's been a very positive thing for Laverne High School and is focusing our advanced kids on what they can do. And I think you'll hear from them the learning that's going on in each of those dual enrollment classes. First, we'll have Haley, who's a junior. Haley Smith is a cheerleader and she's in a dual enrollment, taking two classes, most of our juniors take two. And then we have a senior, Ryan Harvey, who I think Ryan's taking two classes this semester also, but some of them are taking as many as four. So in their regular day, they're adding this load upon them and I think you'll see from both of them that they're very articulate and that you can hear their heart speak on what dual enrollment has done for them.
Good evening, school, oh, sorry. Good evening, school board members, Rutherford County employees and residents. My name is Haley Smith and I'm a junior at Laverne High School. I'm here today to speak to you on behalf of the dual enrollment program at LHS. I chose to take dual enrollment classes to challenge myself, become better prepared for college and to earn credits towards my degree. I hope to become a nurse practitioner and dual enrollment will allow me to get into the field quicker because it will provide me with entry level college credits while I am still in high school. Dual enrollment classes also allow me and my fellow classmates with the ability to earn credits for a lower cost, making it more affordable and more accessible for all students. Without your funding and support, this great opportunity would not be available to us. With over 100 participants enrolled in these classes, LHS is pushing students to work harder in and outside of class. I see myself and many of my colleagues being pushed to find success at a higher level while continuing to maintain good academic standing at our school. My US History class meets twice a week on the Motlow campus, which allows me to experience the independence of college with the support of the faculty and administration at LHS. My Spanish II class provides me with a more rigorous curriculum that although challenging, is allowing me to become more fluent in the language. Through dual enrollment, Rutherford County and LHS are providing students with an excellent opportunity to become successful citizens in the future. Thank you for providing us with the means to become successful college graduates. I hope that your continued support will allow many more students to take part in dual enrollment in the future.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ryan Harvey and I'd like to begin by saying, thanking you for giving me this opportunity and to thank you for your generosity towards Laverne High School. It is immensely appreciated. I'm here today to speak about the dual enrollment program at Laverne High School. Some background on me, I'm a senior at Laverne and I have attended the school for four years under the Ash administration. I'm a member of eight clubs, including National Honor Society, Science Olympiad Competition Team and Beta Club and LHS Corleers. I have a 3.8 GPA and I'm in dual enrollment, English and Algebra and Trigonometry. But I suppose that doesn't tell you much about me or what this school, what dual enrollment has done for me personally. When I started my freshman year, I had other options on where to go to high school. Laverne is close to home and my family and I believed that it was right for me. That didn't stop others' opinions, though. People said, "What is a bright girl like me doing at Laverne High School?" They said it would ruin me and that the same phrase was repeated, "Nothing good can come out of Laverne." They were wrong, of course. Every school has their struggles and I am no stranger to adversity or hard work. I have blossomed at Laverne. The administration and teachers have given us every chance to succeed. They work to provide for our needs. Dual enrollment is a major achievement and is part of our future success. As many of you know, Oakland has the IB program and Central Magnet and Seagull dominate the AP field. Dual enrollment gives us the chance to have a competitive edge and beyond similar, if not higher, playing fields. Dual enrollment is exciting, it's challenging, intriguing and gives the students an opportunity to go beyond what we could ever see for ourselves. Our classes push us to new heights. Dual enrollment is a pleasure in which to take part. Our teachers are excited about teaching the class and we actually want to be there. It's not a chore, but a gift for which we are grateful. Dual enrollment isn't for everyone, but for those who take part in it, we'll be able to walk into college prepared and knowledgeable about what is to come. We are ready and capable, nothing is beyond our grasp. One of the best parts of dual enrollment is the college credit. College is expensive and because of your kindness, we have been able to apply for grant money. This has also allowed more students to join the program and have a chance to strive for higher learning. If that wasn't enough, you went and paid for our textbooks. I speak for every student at Laverne and I say thank you a thousand times over. You've invested in our future and have given us a chance to stand up and say, "We are Laverne and we have arrived." Gratefulness can come from anywhere if people are willing to invest and have faith in who you will become. Thank you for believing in me, my fellow students and Laverne High School. And thank you for opening a new door for us through dual enrollment.
Thank you. Anybody, board members have any comments?
Well, I could say how impressed I am with both young ladies, the school, what you've been able to do there and we appreciate that acknowledgement that you guys are doing the work and this is just the beginning of what could be some great things. And I think as a board, we should be pleased that we're seeing some real results from that. You gals need to go on the circus, sell stuff. You can make it happen. Congratulations for both of your presentations.
I also want to thank my fellow board members. I think a part of this dual enrollment program and the success here was the commitment from the board to make sure that as we brought Stewart's Creek High School online and the state-of-the-art facility that it was, that we did not allow any other academic institution to be left behind. And the Abbott Program at Smyrna High School, as well as the dual enrollment program at Laverne High School are an example of the board's commitment that every school have a high achieving opportunity for the students. And I'm thrilled with the presentation this evening.
Just pretty much made my night, so I feel pretty good right now. Thank you, ladies.
I'd like to just tell Mr. Ash, I appreciate you getting this program going and it's always, I tell Mr. Oldham, it's always good when you come to the board that all your staff comes with you and I really appreciate it, appreciate your staff, not only supporting you, but all the work they do, so.
And I've got a mention, there's an article there that would be in the paper, it's using Thursday, about dual enrollment that was written by our journalism class, the information was given in by the dual enrollment students and then our journalism class together wrote the presentation and they give it to me and Jay, that'll be in the paper later, and it's using Thursday.
Good. Mr. Blair?
As a junior, how many college credits will she potentially be able to earn by the time she graduates from high?
... building, it was one of the 27 hours. So we have students already that were sophomores this past summer to try to reach their 66th or their associate's degree. So they're actually taking home a house over the summer, but we go all 27, so they will all come to school.
It's several thousands of dollars in tuition that parents are, they are not going to have takeout loans and that's pretty incredible.
Ladies, I'm impressed with your explanation to us tonight and your passion for the dual credit and dual enrollment. And Mr. Ash, I thank you, your administrative staff for the vision. You know, it takes some time to put this together. He met with the people at Motlow, they are using one of their athletic buses to help transport the students over there and back in the morning, if you remember, we talked about this, so it didn't just happen. The school and the students together are making this happen, one with their parents and all. I'd like to say to the other parents that may be listening or watching us on TV or listening some other way tonight, the Hope Scholarship is available and a student, it's juniors and seniors at $300 per year that is eligible for this, does not affect the Hope Scholarship monies that you have after you graduate from high school. So I mean, it's a golden opportunity to get some college credit, have the rigor in it and save some money, I guess would be what I would say. So thank you for the vision to do this. We have some other dual credit in some of our other high schools and have a little bit for a year, but this is the largest one we've ever had by far, I think it is. So again, I commend you and thank you ladies for sharing that with us. Anything else you thought of that you'd like to say or anything? They were well planned, weren't they?
It is worth it.
And another point that I'm just thinking, it creates an investment on these young ladies partnering other students that are involved that may not happen, you know, between that senior year and you start college, sometimes things can get a little off track, but you've made the investment of 27 hours. I think that's really a cause that's going to continue to put you on the right track. So getting people started in that right track earlier can be a really, really good thing. I can't imagine that these two and others that have that opportunity to put that much time, energy and effort into it would possibly let that thing get away from them after they made that investment. So I think that's really a really good opportunity to get people started in the right way a little bit earlier on.
I believe some of the students that go, they may be the first one in their family to begin earning college credit. And sometimes the fear of that and the unknown, but by combining a little bit with their high school and all, this should remove that fear. So I think you're going to see some students come out of this that will be going to college and getting a degree that may not have attempted it prior to this. So I think it just has opportunities and potential that's just tremendous for students at Laverne High School.
Anybody else? Once again, Mr. Ash, we appreciate you. Number nine, I guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Evans.
Board tonight, we have one zoning petition appeal. Is Ms. Johnson in the audience? Ms. Johnson, we did send the notice of the hearing certified in regular mail and she also spoke to my assistant a few days ago to just confirm that date. Typically in the past, if someone doesn't attend their hearing, the board simply takes a vote to deny the request and we can send them a notice of that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny this request.
A motion by Mr. Nipper?
Second.
A second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I guess you'll contact them.
Yes, sir, I will send her a certified notice of the hearing.
The board members had the packet prior to, so they had a chance already to look at this prior to tonight.
Number 10, project status update, we went over that Tuesday night. Does anybody have any questions, follow-up or anything on that? If not, we'll go to number 11.
Number 11 is a 2013 ED 2152 Certification of Compliance with Tennessee Code annotated Section 4933104. The superintendent and the chairman of the board of each local education agency shall certify his commissioner honor before October the 15th of the current school year that all children enrolled in the LA have been furnished all required textbooks as determined by the commissioner. And the motion recommend approval, motion for approval of the 2013 ED 2152 Certification of Compliance report showing all children enrolled in the local education agency have been furnished all required textbooks. Mr. Zago did check with our textbook person, there is one back order on a few reading books, but that's because of a growth, it was not the other, that's the only thing that's remaining.
We have 50 reading books in K-5 that are back order, but it's for growth positions, so that we have those students got in 15 workbooks there that are going to be put in our book. How many else is industry being set this week?
Move to approve. A motion by Mr. Holliday?
Second.
A second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 12.
Number 12 is facilities, the Blackman High School press boxes. Principal Galevik has requested permission to construct press boxes at Blackman High School baseball field and softball field. The construction will take place over this school year as funds are available through the baseball and softball booster club fundraisers at no cost to the board. The press boxes will be constructed over the third base line dugouts on both fields. Rutherford County Schools Engineering and Construction Staff has probed both footings and determined that they are adequate to support two-story structures. Agent McLeod's staff attorney has reviewed this request and there is no gender equity issue. Recommend approval, motion to approve construction of press boxes at the Blackman High School baseball and softball fields at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Tackin. We had some discussion on this the other night, is there anything further on it? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 13.
Number 13 is the Director of Schools Evaluation Instrument, which is what you worked on during your recent retreat with Ms. Michaels, and is recommend approval, motion to approve the 2013, 2014 Evaluation Instrument for the Director of Schools as presented and followed the same timeline submitted by TSBA and adopted on May 16th, 2012.
We mentioned the other night, I think everything's pretty close to the way it was last year and everybody got a copy of the new instrument and everything, so. Anybody's got any questions in regards to it before we put it in form, motion by Holliday?
I do want to point out that we did make a few modifications in direct connection to some of the test results that we saw and, you know, put some goals in place so that we hopefully will hit a few more targets that we missed, not that we did poorly by any stretch, but, you know, we're responsive to as things change and staying on the right track. I'm really impressed with the evaluation instrument we came out with.
All right, you heard the motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 14.
Number 14 is a for information only Policy Advisory Committee, and of course, these are nominated or appointed by the board chair, Mr. Terry Hodge. Per Policy 1.602, the following members have been appointed to serve on the Policy Advisory Committee. All school board members are a part of the Policy Advisory Committee. Dana Nichols, which is an educational support personnel person in human resources. Fred Barlow is a principal at Rockville Middle School. Sean Lee, classroom teacher. Emily Mitchell, who's with us tonight, classroom teacher. Amy Wise, Title I supervisor. Goldie Wade, Citizen at Large. Vicky Phan, Citizen at Large. Don Odom, Director of Schools. Agent McLeod, Director's Designee. And Jeffrey, the Board Attorney. I believe the first meeting is November 2nd, is that right?
Fourth, isn't it?
Fourth.
November 4th?
November 4th, the first meeting.
All right. Number 15, general discussion. Mr. Tackin?
Report to the board that we received notices, assistants received notices yesterday from Dr. Gary Ex- Executive Director of the State Department of Education, that the State Department unanimously upheld our decision to deny the amended application from Tracy Donnell on senior school. And that formal notice came to the board. I, and on behalf of the board, want to thank all the board, all the committee members, who I think worked diligently to represent what our high ideals and goals are for this. And I think we also should reaffirm that we will continue, as a system, to look for ways, just like we've got here with dual enrollment, for ways to enhance our opportunities for students to do better. And at a point in time when a charter school application comes through that does meet what we feel like is the proper standard, it certainly, if it's an opportunity to help our students, that's what we'll do.
I appreciate you chairing the committee again.
Mr. Blair? Ms. Michaels has passed out 12 resolutions that the TSBA board has approved to bring to the delegate assembly in November. These are here, of course, the first one is just commending a past TSBA president for her job and her effort in leading TSBA this last year. But if you want to peruse through them tonight and if you have any questions that I can answer, or we can do it another time, since we're, we still have a few weeks before the convention and the delegate assembly, but a couple of them certainly will be talked about in earnest and those that you are passionate about, we certainly will need to approach and discuss with our legislative body.
Mr. Oldham, do you have something on?
I will follow up on something. The other night when he received the first month attendance report, 41,050 students, he asked Mr. Zago how many preschools not included in that, because it's a K through 12 report. He said about 400, it actually came out 391, so he was very close to that. Another thing that I, I'm on the state's committee, is working on the BEP program, state that's recommended to the legislature. One of the discussions were, was this week about the number of early graduates that graduate, say, in December and certainly some loss of funding and all with that, so I had Mr. Mayes check that today. So I had Mr. Mayes check that today and we have had about 359 in the last four years have graduated in December. I don't know whether that'll make any difference or not in looking at the funding. Is there some way to earn some of that ADM funding for those students who might be graduating earlier? That's one of the things the BEP committee is looking at.
Anybody else? Mr. Tack.
Let me just respond back to Josh, Joshua will speak. I think as a board, we've had responses, discussions back to this and I hope that those school officials that are here will back this up, that we continue to have an expectation that every student, from every teacher, from every school official, treat every student with respect, whatever they happen to be. And I just, from a personal standpoint, want to make sure that it's very clear, I have no agenda for or against. I mean, I think legally, that's what we're bound to do and certainly from my moral perspective, I think that's what I'm bound to do. And so any student that feels disrespected or bullied or doesn't feel safe in schools, those school officials need to be held accountable to that. And if there's a situation where that's not happening, then as a school board, we should be held accountable for that. But I just want to make sure, from my personal standpoint, the fact that we have not supported this poster out yet is not in any way, shape, or form, fashion to say that we're anti-anybody, any person in the school. We expect every student to be protected. We expect every school official to uphold that. And our decision to not work with the poster in that way should not, in any way, shape, or form, fashion, be looked at as a way that we're not supporting of any particular student or any particular student group. That's... I've tried to make that as clear as I know how to make it. And if anybody would like to talk with me personally about that, one-on-one, in a dialogue, I'd be more than glad to have that discussion.
Any other comments? I believe we meet, what, two weeks, Ms. Michaels?
Correct.
Next week being fall break, I hope those that are going on trips, staff and employees and students, that everybody has a safe...